And I would like to start the meeting of the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission for the City of Norwood. I'll call the roll. Mayor Schneider.
The President.
Council President Miracle.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Mr. Von der Haar.
Here.
Ms. Longnecker.
Here.
Ms. Hanrahan is here. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the prior meeting's minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Mayor Schneider.
Yes.
Council President Miracle.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
I'm sorry to hear the question.
Motion, I'm calling roll call. Do you approve of the minutes?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Von der Haar.
Yes.
Ms. Longnecker.
Yes.
Ms. Hanrahan, yes. Okay, this is our big one. This is why we are here, although we do have other important things on the agenda. Discussion and approval of the financial recovery plan. May I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make a motion that we discuss.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Excuse me, Sharon. Does anyone have an extra pen? I'm embarrassed.
Here's mine.
I've got it, Sharon.
Okay.
Hello.
Although I've been working at home and my cats love pens, so I wasn't quite sure of that. Okay, Anna Mary, you want to take us through the plan?
Sure. In front of you is a copy of the plan that was approved by the city council last week. Our office and the city auditor's office and the mayor have been working very vigilantly on this. Really, this year, the auditor and the mayor really took control of the Excel files and putting the plan together. So we were more of a looking and reviewing and asking more questions, even though we've done that in the past. But this year, they really took that. And I want to commend them because I sent back, plus my staff sent back, multiple emails with many, many pages of either questions or corrections, and they diligently worked through those to make sure that this plan was in good working order for you and that we took everything that we knew into account. Of course, you know, things happen like COVID-19, and that may change it in the future, but at the time that this was worked on and passed by city council and looked at us, this was what they foresaw happening with the city. Again, this year, you have not only the assumptions with the financials for the general fund, the street fund, and the state highway. There are two attachments that go along with it, which we had last time. Attachment A is the personnel and where they are located and how many for the general fund. And then also is attachment B, which is the capital improvement plan that is also integrated, both of these into the actual financial recovery plan that's being presented to you today. I'm going to hit some of the highlights. The mayor can talk more about some of the more specifics, and if there's questions, we can direct those to him and us. And then Jim Stiff is also here, who's the city auditor, who can answer any questions you may have as we go along. The biggest thing is, is it's really the same as it has been. Starting on page four is really your assumptions that really go to prove out what the numbers are showing back in the back where the general fund and the street highway and your street and state highway are. The revenues, of course, again, COVID-19 may have changed some of that, but as of right now, this is what we feel is confident, is conservative approach, especially in the income tax. We're still doing a 1% growth, going out in 2021 and on out. That is the approach that we've been having. Of course, we don't know what, you know, the future holds, but that's a conservative approach, yes.
I know in the past, we had 1% growth every we've done this, correct?
Yes.
Is that, you mentioned the virus, right? Is that, has this been stress test? I mean, I don't know if it's realistic to assume 1% growth, one realistically be by flat or less, given that hotels are closed, businesses are closed, people are getting laid off.
Right.
What wiggle room do we have in this if these don't meet?
For 2020, we would have some wiggle room. They had a huge balance coming in to 2020. The plan, you can look through it, I think that they would be fine. Going out to future years, we definitely would probably need to look at that. The other thing is, when we come in and have the commission meetings, plus they have finance, we're also looking at where's our revenue stand versus what we estimated? Where's our expenditure stand versus what we estimated? And I think, I stress this because I do a budgetary presentation for our local government officials conference that has now been moved back. I stress in there that revenues are probably more key than the expenditures.
Yeah.
Because if you do not hit what you think for estimated revenues, it will then completely have to change what your expenditure levels are. So I can't tell you what's going to happen. I think that the finance committee here, the council, the city auditor's office, the mayor's office, and then us as well are really going to have to hone in on how are the revenues coming in. One of the things I will tell you is they did pass, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, an extension on the income tax filing here to match what the federal government has done as well. So the normal parameters of when higher levels of income come in is normally April because of that. Well, that's definitely going to be pushed back because of that change that is happening across the country. So in my mind, I think, and it can change, we just have to be diligent in our monitoring, not only at the city level, but at the commission level and then our level as well, at the state auditor's office, and really just try to watch what's going on. 2020, I think that they will be fine as long as they stay within the parameters and we watch that revenue course. That doesn't mean we may not have to come back and revisit the recovery plan before the end of the year, and that also can happen as well.
So I understand why April 15th is a big month for payments traditionally.
Correct.
How much percent of our revenue is based on estimated tax payments for 2020? So obviously, your liability is already set, and people are going to pay on that on the 15th or July 15th now, but how much do we count on for 2020 ES payments in this? Because that's, it's going to be less. So to me, I would want to see, like, what's, how much wiggle room do we have? And does the city have a plan? Because revenues aren't going to come in as expected, right? So does the city have a plan whether a hiring freezes or cut back on capex? Like, what's the plan if it doesn't come in?
I can't speak to that. The mayor can speak to that, but I will tell you, like, anybody in this state, in this country, is really doing it something they've never had to deal with before, even more so than what the 2008 housing slump went through.
Yeah.
I think this is going to be a ruling thing, and I always state that this is a living, breathing document. That means that it can change, and I've also talked about in the, in the past that emergencies happen, and we may have to come back and look at that. So the mayor can talk about, you know, what he may, and he may not be able to talk about that right now. The line even is, like, I can't say for sure until we see what's going on, what the federal government's standing, what we're seeing in the pandemic and things like that, so...
I would just, I'll let the mayor comment, but sitting back and doing nothing, I don't feel is appropriate. And like, my company's been working on it for a month, and it's just, I mean, it's going to happen. So I think there needs to be some thought around contingency plans or whatnot, or how we're going to address it. At least, that's my opinion. I don't think just waiting to see what happens is appropriate.
Well, I would, first of all, I'd say we're not sitting around doing nothing. I mean, first of all, you have to put a plan in place. That's what this meeting is about. It's putting a plan in place. This has been going on for the last three years. So getting this plan approved and moving forward is critically important to the city. There are a lot of, when we talk about capex projects and different things, if there are nonessential things that are in this plan right now that we look at and say, well, you know, you're really going to have to look at how, how the money flows and what goes on, clearly, we're not going to do that. But there are also very, very important things that are in here that need to be taken care of right now. So it takes six months, six months to get a new ambulance. That money is allocated in here. We need to get that process started. We're going to need an ambulance either way. We have water running down the walls in city hall. That roof should have been replaced last year. That money's in here. It needs to be taken care of. So those all, there are a lot of parts of this that are critically important to pass and move forward with right now. And absolutely, the city has to look, I mean, one of the first things you talked about is that hotel tax. Our hotels are sitting empty, and that's been a nice little bonus to what the city had, had coming, has had coming in the last year or two years. But quite frankly, it wasn't there in all the years past. That hotel tax only got passed a few years ago. So the city has, has went without that many times, and the city has went through really tough times in years past with no reserves, with no extra money, with no money sitting there. We were very fortunate to come through this last year with money that puts us in a much better position for the city of Norwood now with all the challenges that are going on to weather this storm, and really, that's what it's all about. So clearly, you know, you mentioned the governor talking about it. It's on the back of everyone's mind. It's, it's what every community member is worried about right now. It's what every business leader is worried about right now, is what does this do financially? The financial impact to your family, the financial impact to your business. Absolutely, for me as the mayor, the financial impact to the city is, is right there, right in the front, and we'll be watching as we go through, which is all we can do. You cannot, we can't plan for what will happen three months down the road because we're not exactly sure what will happen three months down the road. So we do, we are putting some contingency plans. You know, my focus on contingency plans has really been staffing of the fire department, staffing of the police department. How do we get through? How do we continue providing essential services for the city at this point? This is something that, and the money part is absolutely important, and, and we're going to have to continue to work on it. A hiring freeze? We, we barely have any staff in city hall. One of the things that people said to me, or I received emails and texts this morning saying, "We need to fire and get rid of all the dead weight." We're sitting here in a fiscal emergency meeting because we don't have a lot, we haven't had a lot of money in the city. We don't have a lot of dead weight. We don't have a lot of extra people that you can get rid of in the city of Norwood. We're not going to be able to lay off 30 people. Quite frankly, we don't have, we don't have 30 people to lay off. So we've got to look at all that, and I absolutely understand your concerns, Mr. Von der Haar, because it's everybody's concern in here, not just with the city of Norwood. It's really, the whole country is worried about how, the financial impacts of this. We, with this plan, when Jim and I, when auditor and I were working through this, you know, the climate was changing as we were working through this, there were, there were different things coming in place. But we also looked at it and said, this, this is the structure, and these are the things that we need for the city of Norwood to move forward. And we're going to continue thinking, let's move forward. Let's, let's keep, keep things going and progressing, and then when, when we get to that point in the road, then we'll make changes and try to work. Like you said, it's a fluid and dynamic approach to it, but that's the only way we can do it.
Yeah, no, I understand the city's lean. I, I get that. When I was flipping through this, I saw there was a few new positions that were going to be added. I was just wondering, you know, are we, are trying to think forward and say, maybe we push pause on those for now until we have better information? Again, I don't know when we were planning on hiring some of these people, but some of them may be essential. I'm not, I'm just throwing out the...
We were planning on hiring, I think in the plan, in the plan, it staffs out in like June, we start staffing some of those positions.
Okay.
There are a couple of positions that are critically important to, to really run the city. Our safety service director position is critically important. We've had an interim safety service director. I'd like to have, but I don't know how easy it's going to be to hire any of these people right now either. You can't sit down and do interviews. You know, it's not like people are jumping, they're, we've got a health commissioner position that we need to appoint. We're running with an interim health commissioner in the greatest health crisis of the, that the world's ever known, and we don't have a health commissioner, a full-time real health commissioner in place. So when you say not hiring people, I don't think I'm going to be able to hire people, and if I can find good qualified people for some of these critical positions, I absolutely want to hire those people for those positions.
The only thing I would add is, I was asked by my direct report, my deputy director, "Why are you even going due to this COVID-19?" And I said, you know, "They really need a plan to start off with." I mean, we really, for, what, November earlier, we really had no plan that was being upheld. We were in violation of the plan that was there because of assumptions made by the former mayor. So the city really hasn't had a good working plan. And I told him that, and I also said, "We understand that this isn't going to be it, but we need a place to start off with."
No, I, I get that. I just might, I guess what I'd like to understand, and maybe it's not now, but, and you mentioned there's a surplus. So if the projections on revenue don't hit, how much wiggle room do we have? And then we need to start thinking about a plan about how do we address that? Or if we can, again, there's, we're already operating lean, so there's very, maybe there's very little we can do. But if that's the case, what does that mean? Like, so if we don't hit 2020, ignoring the future, like, if we don't hit 2020, what does that mean for the city, is what does that mean for the plan, I guess? But I don't understand what happens.
Okay, so I'll try to explain, you can jump in. So through the whole process, we've been monitoring, right? So I'm looking at hitting certain targets, and, and those were sent out, and they're in front of you, like, the revenues and expenditures and such. So revenues right now in here, there's no property tax. They don't get that till March or April. Those will be coming. What I would say to you is, is that we're going to be diligently looking at those more periodically, myself and our office at the state auditor's office, I'm sure the city auditor, because I'm going to be asking him lots of questions, and then also the mayor's office and the council and finance. And I know they may not meet, but those reports can be sent out and asked for at any time because it's public record. What I would say is, for any other place I would be at, I'm diligently going to be looking, and if they're not hitting targets, we're going to have conversations of what are we doing to scale back? Or during this pandemic, what are we doing that's really just essential and must be met? What are the capital plan? These are the questions I'm going to start asking. What are the capital plan? Can either be pushed off, or let's reassess the capital plan, and what really is number one needs done, number two? And it's also a fluid document, even though it goes in the recovery plan as we go out in the dark here. What can we move around? What can be not done this year? We can wait till the revenue streams are back up? That's all assessing what the needs are, and that's why it's a fluid document. And we can come back, and they can revisit it, and we can come back and say, you know, okay, that's not working, we got to do a new plan. The other thing is, April and I have told them in the past, you know, "You can't spend this right now, even though it's in the recovery plan, because X, Y, and Z hasn't happened, and we don't know where your balances are really going to be." And so we do do that on occasions too, not just the city of Norwood, but we ask that of any of our fiscal emergency or sometimes watch people as well. That's partly what we do during this, is, is look at that. So I guess my thing is, is that we're going to have to be doing things, just like the finance committee and those here in the auditor's office and the mayor, just monitoring what's going on and then addressing it as soon as possible. And they've already said, "We don't know for sure." You know, I want to see what the property taxes are coming in like. I want to see what our EMS is like. That could go sky high, and, but our building can go way low. That's something I've thought about as well. They were able to put some things in here that would address part of COVID-19. I don't think, because of yesterday and this weekend, it may not be enough. I don't know. But we'll, we'll be assessing that and talking with the city on a very regular basis and seeing where they are. The other thing is, some of the operations may dwindle here as well, where some of the expenditures they thought may happen, may not, and there could be some movement across departments within the fund. And we've done that before here and other places when the need has arisen. We have that jurisdiction to help them move that and approve that. But those type of things has to come to our office for appropriation changes to make sure with, they're within the guidelines of the appropriations in total by fund. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it's not a great answer for your question, is? That's the best I got. I think during this whole entire process, you know, we're still working, and the monitoring process of the financial is going to be key. But great question. All right. So yeah, right now, the revenue sources, the income tax has a 1% growth, and it was conservative when we were working on this. What that future holds, we'll be, you know, looking to see. Most of the other stuff in here really didn't change much. We looked at what 2019 came in and really based 2020 mostly off of that, other than miscellaneous revenues. They had some one-time monies last year that they will not have expected this year, which was property sales and stuff. There's also on page five, some change actions that they are looking to address. There's no money associated with these right now, but it is areas that they are looking into, like potentially having Rita in here, looking at EMS services, dispatch funding, and then software for license plate readers. That all could have an impact revenue-wise and expense-wise, and those are some areas that they're looking into going in the future. So that's another thing that I think we need to look at, that yes, we have some numbers here, and we're looking at what they're predicting, but they're also looking at potential actions. We just don't know what those revenue sources are or expenditures until they do more end-up studies on those areas. Is that fair to say? Expenditure assumptions start on page six. The biggest thing here I would like to point out is, look at attachment A, and that is where the personnel, the staffing is for the 2020 through 2024. There are several in here with new hiring, like the building commissioner. We had a contract person. Now they actually want a person in the seat here that's on payroll. You have community development director that they used to have back in the day and hasn't had one in a while, and they're looking to put that in place. A health commissioner, they've had an interim that's really not been, been paid, and now they're looking to put somebody full-time in there, I think, and then pay them and personnel. Administrative assistant is a new position that they're looking to do, and this all comes under what the mayor had put in as an ordinance for his staffing plan as well when he first came in in May. But then you have an elimination of a full-time secretary for the mayor, and then doing two part-times. Well, that takes away health insurance because there's no health insurance for a part-timer. So we have some give and take in that area as well. It goes on, and the other big thing I wanted to point out was the health insurance. So we asked them to look at this area. In the plan that is in play as of right now, that was approved last March, it was an assumption of a 15% increase after 2021, or 2020, so 2021 through 2023 for every year. Well, in talking with their insurance, they said, "Well, what about these assumptions? Would that work as well?" And they said, "Yeah, that, that could be," you know, something that they see. So that has changed. One reason is, is that in 2019, they had a plan that covered two years, and it really put a flat increase in the second year. So they had an increase in 2019, and then 2020, we're not seeing anything, other than if an employee changes what they want between a single family, whatever the case may be. So going forward in 2021, you'll see a 15% increase was also done, but in 2022, a flat, so no increase in that year. And then again, when we get to 2023, but add a 10% increase, and then a flat in 2024. Now, we deem that reasonable based upon the email exchange between the mayor that I saw and their insurance company, and they have seen a flat in the second year in the past. So it seems reasonable to us. That does change the parameters of the expenditure assumptions, and that's one of the big ones that has changed and could change again in the future. We don't know. But it was reasonable based upon what we got from third-party confirmation, plus what we had seen the last couple of years.
Can I add to that discussion?
Yeah.
You know, one of the, one of the big parts of that is what the city does to control the healthcare cost and what we can do. You know, part of it is having a safety committee that the city, a recognized safety committee working on those things, and then working with the union and the membership on, on different areas of the healthcare costs that the city has. So those, those are two big ones. Working with the Bureau of Workman's Comp and really trying to elevate the safety consciousness of our staff and how they're utilizing their healthcare plan. So whether you're, you know, all of us, I think most of us, recognize going to an emergency room rather than going to an urgent care is, is, there are effects on the services or on the healthcare, health insurance that's provided. So doing a lot of that type of communication and helping them understand what are some of the things that the employees, that the staff can do to help keep those costs down is, is going to be, and we recognize that as being that communication is a critical factor in keeping some of these costs in line. Hasn't been done so much in the past, and the employees in the past had sort of the full-ride health insurance. Well, with the union contracts we negotiated in where they're paying a little bit of their health insurance, so they have a little bit of skin in the game, and that makes a big difference. And we feel that's one of the reasons why we could use that as an assumption. It's all those things that, that Anna Mary brought up, but also all the things that I feel and know that I will implement as the mayor of the city to make sure it happens.
Who's setting up that education that you talked about, as far as telling people how to use the plan?
Yeah, we have, there's a third, third-party supplier, Heran, that does, does a lot of our stuff, but we are, there will be another organization that they, they bring to the table, and we'll end up, it's, it's going to be a full-blown, you know, plan with monthly updates and emails that go out and all the things that I get with my company all the time, so it'll be that, on that level to try to, and, you know, so that, that's an important aspect of it.
Yeah, I would leverage, leverage Heran as much as possible. I mean, they're, they're good outfit, and they have a lot of resources.
Yeah.
And education that, put on the website, just send out. It's all kind of put together.
Yeah.
So I think that will help tremendously.
It absolutely will.
So as far as assumptions that were in the plan before, I know when we first started, we had zero increase assumptions. I don't recall what the last plan had.
The one that was done in March of 2019 had 15% increases starting in 2021, 2022, 2023, because we already saw the, we put in the increase that they were seeing in 2019, and it was zero in 2020. Does that make sense?
So it used to be 15% each year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And now it's roughly half of that-ish?
Ish, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yes. The other big topic is the union agreements, which has been the ongoing struggle here at the city. All four have been approved, ratified, and also signed by council. All four, which is police, fire, clerical, and public works, have been built within the forecast. So that was also a lot of back and forth. We would have one or two, then we go forward with the, changes there with what those contracts stated, and then we just had the last two, last week? Yeah, last week. Those were also built in before council got it. So the new union agreements are also built within here, which has the steps, the bases, and I can, and the mayor can talk about that when I'm done here and what all that includes. The other big thing on page five is the health department. This is where they did build in some extra expenses for the COVID-19. Also, they're going to try a pool management service in this year. That's why you see recreation a little different between 2020 and 2021. They want to see how that management company goes and then make a decision going forward in 2021 and on out. And then it talks about the capital plan, which is in exhibit B, which is within this forecast that we have here. Then on page eight and on are the areas that they've looked at at the past, also some things they're going to look at in the future and what that will do for them. Some of that's still being looked at. Some of them have numbers attached to them within the plan. Those were the biggest highlights that I have. I'll let the mayor talk about the union contracts if you would like, I assumed, and then any questions that you have over the document.
Thank you. First, I'd like to talk about the assumptions, because when I was putting together these assumptions, and I started in, started on these probably the day after I was elected in November, we started thinking about what we could do. And as we put these together, I really, I was really trying to come up with and look at each park and look at each piece of property and everything that the city is responsible for, all this common area. And so when I put this together, I was so excited, and then COVID-19 hit, and you start, some of the plans that you put in place, of course, go straight out the window because you're thinking, "I don't know that we'll be able to get that done." And that, this would, this project or that project would be incredible for the city of Norwood. And so it's really sort of, as you look at this, I still bring it to you with a level of excitement and energy that I think it's going to take to get this stuff completed, if we can get it completed in this year. But I also recognize, as Mr. Von der Haar pointed out, there's probably going to be quite a few things in here that we cannot accomplish, mostly because of the timing. I'd hoped in January, when I took I'd hoped in January, when I took office, that we could hit the ground running and that we could get staffing in place and get things moving forward, but it's, it took a little longer, and we're just getting to the point where some of these projects could even get off the ground, and now we're getting shot down by the, the problems that we're having in, in our society right now. So those are, those are important aspects of it. There are some, some really important parts to this that she already hit on. One of the big ones, as we talked about, you know, the health insurance assumptions, and then talking about union contracts, you, you might recall that the first meeting that we had in January, there was sort of the, the ultimatum that was given, I consider it an ultimatum, that was given to the administration, to the new mayor, and to, to, well, to me, to get these union contracts squared away and get things figured out. And we worked really diligently. I'd actually thought that it would be potentially a very negative, have a very negative effect on our union negotiations. They'd been going on for so long with the police department. It was 2015, and, and they just kept going and going. And what it, what it really did was, and what I was surprised to find, was that the employees who were on the negotiating teams really were pushed, and, and it really gave them the drive to make things happen also, and their membership was, is tired, was tired of these negotiations taking forever. So when we sat down at the negotiation table, they were there ready and willing to listen. We were very ready and willing to listen, and we came up with some what I consider to be extremely fair contracts for all four different union organizations. So, you know, a 0% increase in 2020 because we've got to get out of this fiscal emergency and the challenges to get out of this, and then a small raise in '21, they're two-year contracts. We set staffing in the, and, and really put staffing in order. One of, one of the challenges was, of course, police and fire and getting their minimum manpower and agreed upon, and they came to the table ready to listen and with some other solutions. So I really give kudos to them for all the hard work they did, but it was a, a big challenge. We, we still used Clemmons &amp; Nelson, which is the, the law firm that worked with us on the negotiation of them. We utilized the auditor's office a lot to really do the numbers and figure out what, what was, what we were negotiating, and, and that was a big one. We also had one of the people from Clemmons &amp; Nelson, you know, was our numbers guy, and I think he was working with, with Anna Mary even to run some things past. So it really worked out well, and I'm very pleased with that. One of the other things that we didn't mention in here is, you know, the, the fire chief, in a time like this, it's, it's critically important to have your structure in place, your chain of command in place for all these different departments. One of the things is the fire chief had retired in, back in August of 2019, and that lingered. So we had an assistant fire chief that took over all the duties, all the responsibilities of it, but then they, you know, we give the civil service test, and then the fire chief should be named right after that. Well, that didn't happen in November when it should have happened, so we were still running with an assistant chief. Even up into this COVID-19 stuff, we're running with an assistant chief and not really a good clear chain of command. And, you know, the police department and fire department run as a paramilitary organization so that when an emergency happens, you get the best and most effective response. So we were able to, so I'll, I'll say it was actually five agreements that we took care of in this period of time. So we've got our fire chief actually in place now, and that's, that's such an important factor right now and today, in the, the time that we live in. So the, the union agreements, if you guys have any questions, you know, hit me with them. I was really pleased that the, that we were able to move forward as, as quickly as we did from the time that I started working with them to this period in time, to the time that they were ratified, which was all of them were really finalized just last week. But it was, it was a lot of work, but I think it was well worth it, and we have good, fair agreements for the city of Norwood.
I'd just say, good job. I mean, that's been sitting out there forever. So it's nice to have it in place and have some certainty around that, so good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you feel like the negotiations went different than, I know you weren't part of those historically, but we had heard that it was a pretty rigid process, and there wasn't a lot of collaboration, give and take between the two parties? Do you, do you feel like it went as it should?
Absolutely. I, I think when, when I sat down with them, it was a negotiation, and clearly there were things that they knew that the city would like to have, and they, and there were other areas, and, and I've got an executive summary from pretty much telling me, you know, these are all the things that had went on even before I was there, and I, I had to do my homework on it. But when we sat down and really came, came to it, they, there was a lot of give and take. They were very willing to work with the city, and we were very willing to work with them to get beyond this. And I do think that there were some chips on shoulders, and, and there was some history that was maybe wiped clean when the new, when the election went on, and, you know, so absolutely, Brad, I think that's something that happened.
That's great to hear.
Yeah. And I, I think it all has, a lot of it has to do with the relationship that the administration will have with, with, with the staff, with the people that are running those departments, as well as the leadership all the way down through. And I, I think it's a new day for the, for the, for the staff members here in the city of Norwood, because they, they recognize, we're here to work with them, we're here to facilitate and help them get their job done, and, you know, that's, that's really a big part of what we do. Yes, we have to keep things going in the right direction, and, and even in this, there's some tools that we want to put in place to try to help our staff be more effective and more efficient, but it also is to help keep them going in the right direction. But I, I think they recognize the need for that and the need for good, clear direction, so.
Awesome.
Claudia?
Is there any other questions about the recovery plan that you have for either the general fund or the street and state highway? I know you guys got this to review before we came, so.
I have a question about one of the assumptions regarding health insurance costs, surprise, surprise, on page eight. For the expenditures, it talks about tenant councils to charge employees a portion of the premium cost for health insurance. Obviously, it lays out the intent there. How is that reflected in the budget, if at all?
I'll let the mayor or Jim answer that one.
I can, I can answer that.
Yeah.
So with the passage of the current contracts, the employees begin paying in 2020 2% of their cost of the plan if they pick the high deductible, lower cost plan, or 5.5% of the more expensive plan, the low deductible plan. That is shown built within the plan itself.
Correct.
The other lines below it where we see a potential increase, 2021, it's flat, but then we start going up in 2023, 8% to 10%, and in 2024, those are actually shown below the line, they're not built in the plan. So when you're looking at your totals on page 20, they do not include those additional increases. Those are shown on page 20, 21, below the line where it says recovery plan items. So we're only showing the current agreed upon 2% and 5.5%. We've calculated that everyone will keep their current plan, which, you know, we'd like to believe that because individuals will be paying 5% of their plan, we will not see the overwhelming majority of the city pick the most expensive plan, which is where we currently are, where more than 85% of our employees pick the very top plan because they are not financially invested in it. Hopefully, we'll see a shift down next year, but we, we really can't build that in until we see the elections that are done in November of this year.
So that's happening today?
Yes, as of April 1st, yeah.
Okay, great.
One thing I wanted to point out, which was really great, that Jim directed us to look at page 20 and 21 of the plan. This, especially 21, well, let me start and say this. The numbers in, on page 20, well, actually, starting much, much sooner than that, what is it? Page, not 14, page 12, actually, it's got the revenues, but if you start looking at the expenditures, which also start on page 12, and actually, the revenues, this was all done if the plan, given, given the items that had already been in previous plans, so where you see the changes are on 21, is where you see the effects in dollars. So anything above that is without any of the new items that are in this current plan. The dollars are on page 21.
So in the case of 2020, where would I see that?
Uh, the 20, you're talking about the, the employees paying their portion?
Yeah.
Okay, so we knew that was already approved within the union contracts, so it's not a recovery plan item to be done. It had already been approved and agreed upon, so those are actually already built into each department.
Okay.
And it's in each department, because it's not, because that, every department is paying for the health insurance, so the reduction of that expense is then taken out of those same departments to follow suit.
Sure.
So you won't see those.
So in changes from recovery plan items, it's included in that number?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, going forward, is that going to be cooked into the expense, or is that going to stay in this area?
From the direction that Sharon had given us, if, if it's not been approved yet, she would like to see it down in the recovery plan item. Because we had the union agreement signed, sealed, and delivered, as I would say, we were able to put them in or cook them in to the actual expenses for the year.
Okay. Is there other stuff included in there, in this line item? Or is it primary health insurance, or?
You mean on page 21?
Yeah, like when I look at 2021, I see 219,600. Some of that's health insurance, or that's all health insurance, or?
It's all health insurance.
Okay.
For the prepayment, it's the portion of the employee share.
Got it, okay. I just want to make sure there wasn't other recovery plan changes that are flowing into that.
No, not in those numbers. Now, there are assumptions that they're going to look at things, but we have no numbers to put or provide to, so those have not been put into there.
No harm, no harm.
Right. That's, we're still in the, um, looking into phase, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. A lot, I shouldn't say a lot, but there are a great number of things in this new plan that are reviewing or looking into. I would say, just because I landed on this page, review dispatch funding and Hamilton County subsidy for dispatch service to communities. They're going to look at dispatch. I know that's not terribly uncommon for cities to look at that. It's very controversial and very hot button item for residents, because they feel that if we've got dispatch workers of our own, they know the city. It's, it's really contentious for a lot of places, but they're looking into it. They're weighing the cost, as well as weighing, are the services going to be the same as what our residents enjoy now?
And we looked at that two years ago, right? I mean, that's.
This is, I would like for the mayor to speak on this, because this is a different.
Yeah, this specific line item has to do with changes in funding to dispatch that the county is doing for, for communities. So communities that utilize Hamilton County's dispatch services are receiving a subsidy, or receiving, actually, they are subsidizing the Hamilton County Dispatch Center so that they can charge less to communities that are utilizing that resource. So Hamilton County, which we are part of, is subsidizing dispatch services for other communities, and what we want to do is look into, well, if you're doing that for other communities, shouldn't the city of Norwood that's not in Hamilton, that is in Hamilton County, shouldn't we be receiving some subsidies also from the county's funds for running our operation, which, so that's what, that's what we are looking at. We looked into, you're absolutely right, it is a hot button issue. But this has more to do with the funding and trying to get the county to recognize, well, Norwood should receive some of that money also.
Yeah, how much, how much money, like just roughly, are we talking about?
I think they're offering $5, the, each run is, is a charge of $5 for communities where it was, and I can be corrected, it's $17. So if that's true, then we need to look at our run volume and try to figure out, you know, how, what, what's a, so we'll see. That's, that is, we've got to talk to the county commissioners, we've got to really figure out how that works and if it will work for us, because if they're giving money to other communities, shouldn't we be receiving subsidy also for that?
So I think I asked this like maybe six months ago, or is that a year or two ago when we approved keeping it? Is it, are the expenses in line with what we thought it was going to be based on the original analysis?
On the original analysis, I haven't looked in a while, it was, I can, I can definitely put that on something to look at.
Yeah, just curious, we're, we're shook out. Unless you have any follow ups, Brad? I just had one other question, trying to think of big things that could not be in here. So in the water fund, on the capital expenditures, I know there was some analysis being done about, you know, what can be done to the tanks and prolonging their life or replacing or whatnot. So if I look at page A to the capital outlays, attachment B, so it's equipment, equipment replacements and upgrades, 50K a year, is that kind of like a placeholder until we, I guess, does that study come back? Or, no, okay. And is this just kind of a?
That, I'll let the mayor talk, but my understanding last was that was going to be an, over a six month, it was going to be like?
Yeah, I remember, I didn't know when it started though, so.
That's correct. That, that analysis is being done now.
Okay.
Contracted, and that analysis is, so we'll, we'll figure out where we go pretty quickly. The Ohio EPA is requiring us to really look closely at our whole system and absolutely look at the water tower system, so that analysis is a, a big interfering.
Yeah, it's a big variable.
Project, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So the 50K that's in there is just kind of normal maintenance type things outside of, okay, all right.
Once they do have the water tower situation, we have that analysis, we'll also look at what that said and, and talk with the city on plans, and then we'll have to do an analysis of can the water fund afford it, what financing's out there, so we would be reporting on that as well. At this time, we can't do that, and the water fund is not one of the emergencies, but it is one of the ones that we have talked about in the past. It is on our radar. Once that analysis comes in, because I, I don't, I'm not an expert on water, we won't know what we really need until that comes in, and then that will be another conversation, and a look at financing and see what they can and can't afford, and what we'll have to do going forward.
So I missed, what do we think that'll be in?
It's not scheduled to be done until June, but I would think it would probably be later than that.
Yeah.
I applaud the city for being proactive on this. You don't want to wait until you get an NOV from EPA, so you, you got a violation, deal with it, fix it now.
What's an NOD, like notice of deficiency, or what's an NOD?
Notice of violation.
Yep.
Notice of violation.
Okay.
I had a few more just questions about overall. One thing I, I'll just say first of all, is I think as much government funding, county funding, or whatever that we can go after, I was excited to see that administrative assistant was going to be doing some grant writing and some things like that, because I, on the non-for-profit boards that I'm on, that is a huge, that's obviously serving a different constituency, but it's a huge source of funds, and there's a lot of grant money out there that people are trying to give, whether it's not-for-profit, whether it's federal, whether it's state, county, who, who knows? You wouldn't believe what's out there, so I commend you for that. One other thing too, is just the COVID-19, I was curious who might be looking into some of the funding loans, things like that that are being provided to citizens, corporations. I'm sure there's government, city-related assistance as part of that bill, that thousand-page bill. So I'd just kind of throw that out there, I guess, for, for comment later if there is anything regarding what might be available, or, you know, I encourage us to look into that. There might be, you know, if we end up having to furlough people, or, you know, people that might be exposed, they have to stay home, any, anything that might be out there. I know that, you know, Ron and Tom, I'm sure their companies are looking at it, we're looking at it. It's there, so is that something we can tap into? So just kind of put that in general.
All the department heads are keeping track of, of any funds that are expended for COVID-19 response, and same thing for tracking expenses with employees. So we're, we're sort of putting our case together for when those things come out. I'm receiving emails, I probably receive six emails a day on, you know, the SBA loans and all the different things, and we're trying to forward those on to the businesses and trying to help get those to, really, a lot of that is coming out through, even though Norwood Chamber of Commerce is sending out emails. So there's a lot of that that. So, there's a lot of that, that information that's going out there for government entities. There hasn't been as much, but it's clearly there's, the writing is on the wall that it's coming. So, we are trying to keep that information together so that when we do put that application in. When you talk about other grants, you know, even the community development block grant funding, the state funding for resurfacing programs, all of those, those are, those are the critically important programs that we should be applying to that we haven't been able to in the past because we haven't had people like the executive assistants or even a community development director who is really your economic development director. All those people are really the funnels for the city where all of that comes in and they decipher it and say, yes, we need to go for this, this, and this and start working on it. And that's something that we've been lacking in for many years, so that's...
Yeah, I mean, you could get everything from a police cruiser to, you know, 25 grand for a park to just, there's a lot of sources and there's a lot of area of need that, you know, it's out there, let's go ask for it.
Yeah, just city planning, just planning Montgomery Road and what kind of improvements we can make along Montgomery Road to reinvest in the business corridor. There are grants out there for that. Those are all grants that we're trying to tap into, absolutely.
Yep, yep. Another thing, and I'm kind of bouncing around a little bit here, you had mentioned earlier about interviewing for those, some of those new positions. Are you in a position where you're unable to interview people?
Uh, no, I mean, so council just passed the ordinance last week. We've got to get this passed before we can move forward. I've got resumes that I started collecting up back in December and January and people that, some qualified people, but other people that really I would interview and see what happens there. It's not a matter of not being able to interview them as much as there have been constraints. It's hard to offer a job to a person and say, well, maybe it'll be this, but maybe it won't depending on what happens. So, you know, in January, I was already sitting down with some people and trying to get some interviews started and laying the groundwork, and then that sort of got set to the side. So, of course, I set it to the side. There have been a lot of other projects that I've been working on. But with this passed, then we can start, you know, really opening that door back up, posting, reposting them out there, you know, whether it's on the Ohio Municipal League site, Cincinnati sites for government leaders. So, there's a couple of different sites, we'll put them, and then we'll just start pecking down through. But we've got to find the right people. My goal is to find people who are aggressive and recognize the potential that the city of Norwood has and maybe that have the grant writing experience and the connections already within certain organizations that they bring right to the table. So, those are important aspects of it. In years past, when the city has hired for positions, a lot of times it has been because we are a statutory city and it's very politically, politically supercharged, there have been positions that have been filled with people that maybe weren't the absolute best for that position. I'm not a big advocate of that, and I'm not going to be appointing people just because they helped work on somebody's campaign. So, we've got to find qualified people. I've put together job descriptions for each one of the positions, and those are, those are sort of the things that, that should be on the checklist for the person who gets that job.
Thank you. So, I said, I'm jumping around a little bit. I had a couple of questions on the general fund, page 13. Under auditor, we have contractual services. I couldn't recall, I know we added those last year, I couldn't recall what that was.
I can.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, if you want to speak.
So, previously, the way the city managed a lot of our miscellaneous expenses, if you look on page 19, we would put the expenses related to the collection of property taxes such as DRETAC and county auditor treasurer's fees, election expenses, advertising delinquent taxes, as well as the state examiner fees, all in this miscellaneous category on page 19. We took all of those expenses last year and rolled them into the auditor's office contractual expenses. We then moved the solicitors or outside legal fees to the law department, and we moved the property taxes, real estate taxes, to the public lands and buildings, and we moved the earnings tax refunds as well as the Fund 89 incentive to the earnings tax office. So, to try to eliminate this messy area of our budget, we found appropriate offices that would just take care of those in the contractual keys.
Okay, so you kind of shifted the monies from one place to another?
Correct. So, if you, if you look on 2018 where all of these are listed on page 19...
Yeah.
And a little bit on to page 20 there, if you take those amounts and condense them into departments, then you'll show up in 2019 forward.
Okay.
But we don't have this large...
That whole cluster under non-departmental, is that...
Correct.
Okay. That just got reallocated. Okay, because I saw that like law director, I just kind of saw that pop up and stay there.
Yes, so it should be law director, auditor, and earnings tax office all saw the bump equivalent to the amount that was decreased under the miscellaneous expenses.
Correct. The only thing that stayed non-departmental was the retiree portion, the benefits, the C-9 from the past, and then the new program going forward. That stayed under there.
And when I'm looking at the C-9, just that, that page 19 again, when we look at like 2017, I know that was all kind of getting shaken out the last couple of years. When we look at 2017 actual, the retire, I'm sorry, the retirees' healthcare and C-9 trust, is that kind of what we were into as far as the retirees for healthcare at that time?
2017 was a year that they had to make up some payments that weren't paid in the past. That's why it's so large. And 2018 was a normal year for those programs before the new retiree benefits program was put in place at the end of that year that really started in 2019. Then for the retirees' healthcare and C-9 for 19 and 20, that's really just, they had an opportunity, I think, to file in 2019 for that, and then we're seeing the last of that coming in 2020. They've already had some payments this year if you like, when we get to that in the expenditure side. But this really should be, really, we should not see it going after this year. That's why it's dwindling so much. And that's why the retiree benefit program started in 2019 and going forward. It's a set amount for those that are approved through, they have to send in paperwork every year, and they've already re-approved the people who are eligible, and they have to continue to do that. And as those people die off, then that will reduce the amount that will be paid out.
And no new people flow into that, is that right?
There's only one potential, and that would be next year.
Okay, okay. So, that could even go down five years out?
Correct, yes.
Okay. On that, and again, I apologize for jumping around. On page 19, under recreation contractual services, I see a, just a pop for this year.
Right, so in the assumptions I had pointed out, maybe as that they're going to look at a, I just lost it.
Pool management.
Yeah, a management, a pool management company. He wants, the mayor would like to look at that and utilize that for 2020, and then look to see how that works before, that's something they want to project for the rest of the years.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct.
So, we're going to try it out, see if it works, and maybe add it later?
Well, we're going to do some numbers. There's potentially some cost savings involved with doing this. So, we're going to do some numbers and potentially try it out, yes.
Okay, awesome. I think that's, oh, on the capital projects, New William talked a lot about that kind of stuff. I was just kind of, I just, I just noticed some things. It looked like there's a trend on going towards electric vehicles. I didn't know if that was, I was just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, one of the things that was brought up by a community member and even by a council member was for the vehicles that we are driving around the city, a three-square-mile radius of the city of Norwood, you know, whether it's the building inspector or housing inspector or, you know, even that we should potentially look at going to some electric vehicles. Really, it's a matter of whether council wants to move that way or not, or whether, you know, there's, there's a couple of people that are pushing that. There's also a push to put in a electric recharge, electric vehicle recharge station close to the high school, feeling, the thoughts being a lot of high school teachers, a lot of, you know, science teachers like to drive electric cars, and it is good for our country, so looking at some of that stuff, so...
Is that, you got on the charging station, is that like a free charge or is like a charge point? I have electric vehicles, because there's pay ones. What's the city planning on doing?
Sorry, the question was...
For the charging station?
For city vehicles, we would set up a charging station there at City Hall, and those vehicles that sit in the parking lot at City Hall would be charged up. But then, the other one is for, at the parking lot, you know, the city owns two parking lots right there on Sherman and on the station, and those, setting up a charging station there, which would be for the general public to use.
Yeah, there's a, I don't know, you're looking at, it's called Charge Point. From what I understand, they'll, they'll build it for free and they charge people to use it, so rather than spending money to build one.
That's what we're thinking about doing.
Yeah, just look into that.
Depending on, depending on how, you know, how the funding works with all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, just a couple more things. Page two on capital improvements. Under parks and playgrounds, I know, I know there's been a stress to restore the parks, and there's been a movement, kind of grassroots and otherwise, to, to focus on that and create good play spaces and, you know, we have, we have the land, we have these parks that maybe have fallen in disrepair, and so I obviously saw that as being a focus. One thing that caught my eye was replacing the lights at the Three Water Works baseball fields. Are those three different parks or are those just three fields?
Yeah, there are three different, there are three different fields. We actually had one of the, one of the big light towers fell over. Maybe it was in the middle of a storm or something. But when you talk about one of those huge towers that are wood that have been in place since, I think, the 60s, it's, it's time to re-update some of that.
Is that for the, is that for baseball or is that for football or is that for everything?
Well, they're used for a couple of different, I mean, one is the baseball field, which is right by the schools, the schools' maintenance building there on Harris. That is one that's used for football during this, during the train up, you know, when they're doing two-a-days and stuff. But it's, it's a softball field, it's a baseball field, that's one. And then there are two other baseball fields down on the other end, down by where the tennis courts are where you walk, drop down.
Right, yeah, my son's, my son's played there, and I guess I was, it seems like, and I'm just kind of, I guess, throwing it out there, it's just my opinion, seems like a lot of money, first of all. And I, as far as baseball, I don't, is there even night baseball played on those fields? Or is it because there's no lights? Are we going to expand, start having softball leagues or like, I don't know?
I'll say yes to all of those questions. I think there, there used to be a lot of baseball played there in the evenings, late in the evenings, and there were always softball leagues that were playing down there, and they were later in the evening softball league. So, yes and yes. Are we going to try to expand? We put in money for a recreation commissioner. We haven't really been running with the recreation commissioner for a while. There's a big push to, you know, if you look at the basketball courts are down there now, open, well, they're not open back up right, right now, but they are open, they're back. And there's been a big push in the community to have some league play for those basketball courts, trying to reinvigorate and get our tennis stuff going. And it doesn't have to be super competitive, but even teaching some tennis classes down there, those are great courses, are great tennis courts. So, there's, all of that is all potentially out there, and there is absolutely a, a push from a lot of community members, and it's not a small group. It's, there's large groups out there that want to try to reenact that. So, we're, we're trying to put in place the tools that are necessary to facilitate that.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, again, just thinking, hearing you talk about that, that's another place to maybe tap into some grant money and...
Oh, yeah.
You know, see, but, so that's, that's more or less an overall investment in the entire space.
The basketball courts with some grant money.
Yeah.
Actually, with some matching funds from different, not city-led, I mean, citizen-led events. So, you know, when you talk about the Norwood, the 5K race, the Gem of the Highlands, they're utilizing the funds that they bring in from under that Gem of the Highlands to, to make improvements. So, same thing for the Wasson Way Trail stuff, you know, it's not the city's money, it's not been planting all the trees and doing that, but it's been citizen-led efforts, and kudos to them, they're doing some great work for us.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, well, I think I've taken enough time, so I appreciate all your questions.
I know, you have great questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I spoke too soon. One last thing on the street fund, the very last page, eight of capital improvements. This is not a loaded question, but I was just curious about, of the streets that are going to be repaired, how did the process go to decide kind of what streets first, how much money, and then go on, you know, going out to 2021, and then it looked like 22 to 24 was, we're going to do, we're going to do a lot, we just don't know what at this point. So, how did we go through that process?
Well, these first, the first few streets, the Indian mound area up there in Sheridan, that's all, that was all planned last year, and it's all in place.
Yeah.
It will happen. But the Streets and Infrastructure Committee on City Council is heavily involved in looking at this. They have asked that a engineering study be completed of the city streets, so ranking all the streets and telling them, telling us, giving us some good information. So, I've contacted an engineering firm. It's not the typical engineering firm that we utilize with the city, so it's sort of a totally outside perspective of what streets need to be, so that they, that'll be an engineering study that will then be presented to the finance, or to the, I'm sorry, to the Streets and Infrastructure Committee, and they will make decisions based on that. And ultimately, it's a matter for them, it is a political hot potato at times on what streets get paved. But I think they'll, they'll make good decisions. A lot of these streets were streets that were put in here because they are the worst streets in everybody's eyes. So, we'll, we'll see what happens. I think, Brad, this, this is clearly going to change. When you talk about Montgomery Road, it's been years and years since Montgomery Road, which is a state Route 22 and 3. We should be able to get all sorts of grant money to take care of Montgomery Road. 561 is another one that sort of goes right through the middle of our community that needs it. So, and, and we can get, we got to, we've got to make our application, and we've got to keep it out there, and they actually, you hate to say it, but the worse the road is, the higher probability you have of getting grant money.
Sure.
We've got a lot of them that are really worse.
A lot of low hanging fruit.
So, we're going to do, I think we'll do okay if we apply. So, it's not really a laughing matter. I know people take it very seriously. I got yelled at when I walked on people's porches all through the election season. Basically, they'd say, fix my streets. They yell at you. And we're, we are working on that. We have, there are funds in place. It's how those, how those funds get used to hit the right streets, and we're trying to do that in a really systematic and, you know, intelligent manner.
Is that engineering study also going to take into account like traffic patterns, like cars per hour, whatever stuff you assess, or is it going to be mainly, this thing's a landmine and...
Yeah.
And it's, you can't drive down it without a new suspension?
At this point, it's going to be condition of the street. It's not going to be the, the actual traffic studies and all of that. So, it'll, it'll be a condition of it, and my understanding is that it'll be a rating system of ABC, and then they'll prioritize, we'll try to prioritize from there.
Yeah, but I would, I guess I would encourage you, in my opinion, to, to also look at the frequency of the traffic that goes through. I mean, you know, you look at one intersection, it could be 10,000 cars a day. You look at another one, it could be 50.
Right, right.
Or something like that. So, not that I don't want, you know, everybody wants a new street. I understand that. But I think it would make some sense for the committee to, whoever's on that committee to look at some of those things as well. So, if you've got one that, two that are all things being equal, well, this one gets a lot more traffic, then maybe this guy gets the attention, whereas maybe this guy might have gotten more neighbors yelling and screaming.
Right.
And it's just what is, and maybe we put you on list B to be addressed later, but I would, I would like to think, because I know in grants and city money and all that kind of stuff, you know, they look at that, the frequency of traffic and the flow and the importance of that road to other connecting roads and the corporations and just, you know, where, what are the roads that are, people are using the most, and that should have some favor to it.
Even on Montgomery Road, we're looking at, we've got ODOT doing sort of traffic light synchronization, and that's a big part of it too, is for traffic calming back in our residential areas, is having a really good flow on Montgomery Road and on 561, the main thoroughfares, as you state. Because if the main thoroughfares run well, people will dump right out onto the main thoroughfare and then go where they're trying to go. But if, if Montgomery Road's not running well, well, then they're going to go back to Wattman, or they're going to run across Hopkins, or they're going to run down through the back streets where we don't want them.
Right.
So, we are looking at that, you know, for Montgomery Road, it's, it's traffic light synchronization and then also pedestrian safety. And those are some funds or some, some grants that we weren't aware of, that we were made aware of in January with a meeting with ODOT. So, we're working on all of those things. So we're working on all of those things, but you're absolutely right. The, the infrastructure committee needs to really think about those things too. What, that needs to be something that's considered travel.
Yeah, I would think a civil engineer or somebody would be able to give some advice on that. I mean, I'm no expert, certainly, I just think that you're, you're looking at multiple forms of data rather than, well, this one just has the most potholes. It's, it's kind of, it's like anything else, you know? This park gets used 10 times more than the other park, so we should put some more money into this park versus this park that's at the end of a cul-de-sac somewhere that is kind of for those immediate residents. You're not getting a bang for the buck, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So, that, that's just my two cents as far as that goes, but.
Also, and within that committee, correct me if I'm wrong, they also are looking at other needs like stormwater and other things that could affect the roads so that they don't wanna tear up a road back-to-back and waste money. I think that's been a huge discussion, not only on council floor, but also in that street committee as well. That is great to hear. That's something I think that as a resident, you would want to hear from them, that they're looking at not just the road, but what's underneath the road, what's beside the road and, and take all of those into account when they're, when they're deciding that. And is that correct from what I've seen and heard? So, they are very into what's going on and I think the study will help that, plus, you know, other needs, I think, you know, some things come up with stormwater when we have, you know, rains and stuff and I, and they're taking that into account as well. And I think that's a big part of it too, 'cause even some of your smaller roads may actually have to be done 'cause there is something underneath that is very undermining the integrity of the roads too. I think that that's something to keep in mind, not only for us, them too and, and your citizens and the protection of them as well. So.
Yeah, I think all, that's what I mean, all those variables kinda need to be looked at as part of that process.
And, and they're talking about that a lot. I know that, I know, I look at their minutes, I look at, at a lot of their meetings. And on page seven, he kinda outlines on the assumptions, where those roads in the street interventions are based upon the engineering study and Street Infrastructure and Council Committee recommendations. So he actually, he points that out in the assumptions as well, where that, the street and the capital, the capital plan kinda come from in decision-making, so.
Okay, you said that was page seven?
Page seven of the assumptions, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Is there more questions from anybody?
Yeah, I have a question. What is, what is required, I, I'm looking specifically at the, on page 20 of the general fund, of the line excess of revenue over or under expenditures and where the plan runs a deficit in 20 and 21. I assume that's acceptable, or else it wouldn't be here.
Okay. So the revenue, the expenditures are outpacing the revenues in 2020 and 2021, is basically what that line is saying.
Right.
But as you look down, they came in with a beginning balance of $4.6 million in 2020. So, what they're doing is spending down that balance that they were able to carry forward.
Okay, so it's just, all right, so the balance sheet looks fine.
Yes.
The income statement is a deficit for two years.
It would be for, in, in the line that you're looking at, yes, it's not a deficit in fund balance. I wanna be careful in, in saying that, 'cause that's two different things in my world.
Right.
So what we're looking at is, they definitely pushed off some capital plans from last year into this year. So we did expect to see some more expenditures this year and making, the biggest thing was taking the union contracts into account, making sure that those were passed, building those within the expenditures, building up the assumptions for the rest of revenues and expenditures. The bottom line, do we stay positive in fund balance in 2020 and the next five, in the next four years after that? So five years in total. That is the biggest thing. For all the plans that they have in place, can they, at what the assumptions are today, handle what they are planning to do? And I think the staffing plan that we made them do last year and incorporated again this year shows where they are gonna be that way. And then the capital plan was something we really pushed for as well, 'cause there was a lot of needs here within the city, not just the general fund, the street, the state high, we're gonna look at the water part of that as well. And building that into the three funds that we have in front of you now. Can all of that planning and assumptions go in and still have a positive fund balance at the end of the year? And that is a requirement that we have to have as, as a commission looking at that, is a requirement that our office, that the state auditors has. And when they were building this, are you still within those guidelines and we're not down to zero or negative or really low balance? 'Cause then I'm gonna question you on, do you really need to do that now or not? Which then also goes into what Mr. Von der Haar was saying, as we do the monitoring, are we really staying on the targets that we've laid out in the plan? And if there's a target being missed, whether it's a revenue or expenditure, how are we going to then change our plan and, and make this living document more reasonable as we go forward? Does that make sense?
Yep. Yep, sure does.
Yeah, my, my only comment on that would be deferred maintenance, deferred items that were not completed in years past. Okay, now, great, you didn't do these things, but the roof at City Hall is dripping every time in the auditorium. You saved us $80,000 last year and we can carry that over, great job. But we have a roof that's leaking and it wasn't done. So, there's, as you talk about, you know, this being a deficit, it's, it's money that, there's money that has to be spent to continue the operation that is required, so.
Yeah. Yeah, not, not knowing as much as you do about the projects, I wondered whether we could, and you're free to do this, of course. I mean, even if we pass this plan, you're free to push projects out.
Right.
But not knowing as much as you did, I counted up about half a million dollars of 2020 projects that, from my kitchen table, looked like they might be not so urgent as the roof on City Hall. Right?
Yeah. That's true. There are, there are projects in here that are just, like you said, not so urgent. Even with city, even with city council, when we talked about passing stuff last Tuesday, we, we talked about, we are actively, we've got the specifications together for City Hall and we, we asked for an ordinance to, for us to put it out to bid and for us to get that work done. And, and a couple of them said, is that really critically important to get done now? And the consensus was, yes. You know, the building, the walls are, have water running down, we're ruining, you know, we're doing much more damage by not fixing it now than waiting. And they all agree. But there were, there was other discussion on just what you said.
Yeah. Well, and another way to look at that is how cost-effective is a roof repair right now versus a roof repair three years from now?
Right.
I would presume quite cost-effective, right? Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a replacement, it's a rehabilitation of the whole system, so, I mean, it's.
I mean, we can spend 100 and whatever now, or twice that.
Yeah.
Down the road, so.
Correct.
Yeah. But, but some of these projects aren't like that, like.
Correct, absolutely. And, and that goes to, to Mr. Von der Haar's point of, we really have to look at that and what, what is important to get done and those things will get completed. And the other things, we will, will sit back and really readdress and, and look at them as we move forward. Absolutely.
Right. And forgive me, we, we might've talked about this, Brad might've brought this up, but the, but I'm confused by the Fund 89 tax incentive. Did we talk about that?
Okay. So, we have in the past, but I'll.
But, but right now, we haven't, 'cause it, it, Brad didn't bring that up? Okay, that makes.
Jim did.
That makes, because it appears on page 19 here and it looks to me like an expense on page 19. Am I wrong about that?
Okay, so, I'll talk about it, 'cause we required this, our office did. So Fund 89 is really for the tax incentives, I think for three companies, maybe four, it's three for sure. Paycor is the biggest. So they have an incentive agreed that if they hit certain things during the year, the following year, they will then get an incentive payback to the company, 'cause they met the requirements that are in.
From the city to the company?
To the city, yes.
Okay.
When that is met, 'cause there was actually one that did not meet this past year, so they will not get an incentive back to them, it will stay with the actual city itself. What they do is, and it's part of the agreement, they move income tax monies that are collected and put in the general fund, over to Fund 89. So, those are sitting there to make that incentive payment to those companies when they meet it the following year, okay? But, that's really a part of income tax collections and we consider that part of general fund monies. Our office required them to show those revenues into this, so the general fund has Fund 89 built into it.
I see.
And it's in the inner, it's in the income tax revenues and then now, under the earnings tax department, that estimated expense out from the incentive in forecasted years is also built into there.
So some of the municipal earnings tax is put into Fund 89.
Correct.
In case we have to pay or reward, I suppose it would be this handful of companies, Paycor included.
Correct.
Okay.
If you would look at the information that Jim would have on his website, the general fund would show less income tax revenues because they don't put all of them there, they move part of it to Fund 89. But that's not a true picture of what income tax revenue collections are and we require that to come back into the general fund for the forecast.
Okay. So then, I guess my, what I didn't notice that I now notice with that ex, well, so the 2020 recovery plan that has just, that will be replaced today, I feel confident, had 18. almost $9 million of municipal income tax, including the Fund 89 portion. So we're, we're imagining municipal, we were imagining COVID-19 aside, that municipal income tax would rise by about a million dollars. Am I reading that correctly?
Are you on page 12?
I am.
Okay.
And I'm also bringing in data from.
Prior plan?
Yeah.
I don't have the prior plan.
I don't have the prior plan for me. Um, I had looked at that originally.
You're violating your six feet.
I know. Uh, so 20, what we did was, we put in the actual numbers for 17, 18, and 19. So 19 had 18.1 million dollar collection. That was higher than what the last plan had showed, I will say that. How much higher? Jim might know off the top of his head, I don't know. So, going into 2020, it was reassessed on, based on 2019's actual revenues collected for all of income tax, where should we be? Now, we actually dropped that a little bit, if you look, it's 18.173 in 19 and right now, the 2020 forecasted is 18.025, which is different from the last plan that we had. But where we were looking at what actual came in for 19, we're looking at what's been happening and it was dropped a little bit.
It's not that, it's not that big of increase.
Right.
It's an increase over the plan, but not over the actual.
Correct.
Got it?
Yes. And we wanted to look at that to make sure it was more reasonable.
Yeah, makes sense.
Now, again, back to what Mr. Von der Haar had stated, that may not be reasonable, but we won't know for a while. But then.
Mr. Von der Haar is a pessimist.
Yeah. Or a realist, however you wanna look at it. But from 2020 on, that's where the 1% increase was built in. So, but 2020 was based upon what we saw in 19.
Makes sense.
With a little bit of reduction.
Thank you.
Fund 89, Jim, Fund 89.
Yes.
It's his favorite fund.
I know. He does not like that we put this in here.
If I could just say one thing and a point of clarity on that is, also, that is one of those items on, that's shown on page 19 for 2017 and 2018, but then it moves to page 14 under the earnings tax office for 20.
Thanks.
19, 2020.
Any other questions, concerns?
Couple more. Gave me some time, so. I'll try to make these quick. The bid process for all these projects we're talking about, is there a formal policy in place for free bids, whatever?
Yes. Yes. Anything, anything over $50,000, we're, we're doing public bidding, we've gotta put together spec and a bid package and it has to go out to bid. Anything under that, my, my requirement of the people that work within the administration is three bids. And, you know, in some situations, you can't get three bids, there's only, you know, a couple suppliers that can do it.
Sure.
But we're, we are absolutely trying to get bids and apples-to-apples bids, hopefully. So, yes.
Right, okay, great. One other thing, the accounting methods, principles, report, whatever we call that.
We can, I'll get to that.
You'll get to that, okay. Lastly, and I mean lastly, when you go to page 20, I think that's the timer telling me I'm out of time. Changes in fund balance, that's kind of our, our net. Okay, I'm sorry, I think I might've misread that. Basically, just looking at the, the fund balance going out, we're about 1.8, 1.9 million positive fund balance is where we end up?
Correct.
All right, I'm good. Thank you.
May I just comment on that real quick? That fund balance and working with the mayor, our target was always to have about a wanted minimum of 1.5 to 1.6 million dollar carryover each year to cover January's expenses. So we never let this go below that point. And that's gonna be our target moving forward, even when we make adjustments later this year, is to always have that positive cash carryover so that we can hit the January expenses each year.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions on the plan? Well, I would ask for a motion to approve the plan. Oh, before I do, by the way, these are your copies. What we'll be distributing sometime during this meeting, if not afterward, is the original plan. It has the original signatures of the council members and then we, the auditor's office needs the original signatures of the commission members on the plan, so. Okay. That's if we approve it and we won't know unless somebody moves to approve the plan.
I will move to approve the plan.
Mr. Shepherd moves? Do I have a second?
No second.
Mr. Short seconds. I will call the roll. Mayor Schneider.
Yes.
Council President Miracle.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Von der Haar.
Yes.
Ms. Longennecker.
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Awesome. Now, Anna Mary, and I think you might actually have some information on the report on accounting methods, maybe?
Sure, we can, we can address that first. The report on accounting methods, which was done by our office, those are comments that have to be cleared along with showing positive balances before the city can come out. Mr. Miracle is actually going to be spearheading that going forward in conjunction with our office. He's been, provided a list of all the comments and the departments that have to fix the comments that we have right now. A lot of them are council also, 'cause there's some approvals that have to happen. Because of the recovery plan, I also lost my mother in the last two weeks and with the COVID-19, we have not been down here to really see where we stand on those things. As soon as the COVID-19 is really, you know, lifted with some of the things that we can do here, and, and Mr. Miracle's gonna be working on those items as well, we will address those and see where we stand. So at this time, I really don't have an update on that right now. The, the real focus has been the recovery plan and that took a lot of focus and a lot of manpower from not only the city, but also my office. So, but Mr. Miracle has taken that on as a spearhead and he may wanna talk about that during his president report too.
Yes.
So thank you. The other things that I have, and I'm just going to go really briefly over those, there were attachments sent out that you normally get. I don't think I had a copy for everybody, but I will send it to Sharon of the reconciliation for the month of February. But the biggest things on the attachment A, which is the statement of cash position, the unexpendable balances, there was only one negative, which is the employee flex spending, which really coincides with the general fund, and that's a timing issue that we will be working with the auditor's office. There were no other negatives on that one. We sent out the revenues, and then also the expenditures. Now, the biggest thing to know from this, the recovery plan estimates were the old ones. They are not the new ones, because you had not approved them. So it is what it is, based upon the old plan. Again, we're going to be monitoring this. I get reports from them monthly, if not several times a month, looking at what they have, where the revenues are, the expenditures are, if, and so forth. But that's the biggest thing I'd like to point out right now, is this is really based on the old estimates as of like, two minutes ago. But I wanted to give you some sort of analysis, and in looking at where we stand right now, it is only the end of February. I did look into many of the exceeds that were in the expenses, a lot of those, there were some one-time expenses you have up front, we've talked about. Also, there were three payments for insurance, because the similar one normally is paid in January, that's not an, that's a normal thing here. So you really had three months of payment on health insurance, and then there was a few other things. Nothing that was distressing to me in looking at things, but if you have questions, please let me know. Okay. That's my...
If there are questions, I'd be more than happy to stop and we can address those. I'm going to go on to what I had as old business, new business. I know I discussed this at a previous, at our last meeting, I think, is the bylaws. And this came about actually, I think, due to a question about public participation. And if you look on page three, I did put that in, in the bylaws to spell that out, that public comments would be allowed, but they would be limited to 15 minutes total and no longer than three minutes per person. Also, that they should be relevant to the fiscal emergency plan, declaration, or some other matter that we are currently considering at that meeting. The other change that I would like to point out... I know I should have underlined it. On page four, under powers and duties, the chairperson shall act as the duly appointed representative of the commission and is authorized to seek advice or obtain information pertinent to the official actions of the commission on the commission's behalf from the Ohio Attorney General and any other officer or employee of the state. This is wording that has been added to a lot of our bylaws now. Quite honestly, from a legal perspective, the question that any, anyone authorized to offer legal advice would have to ask is, who is my client? And so when members of the commission ask, it's like, well, they're really not, the attorney general's office is not the attorney or legal representative of the mayor. He is of the commission. So by including this verbiage in the bylaws, we are then, you, the rest of the commission members are then delegating me as a person with authority to request the information on behalf of the commission of the attorney general. So it basically is a way that, it's kind of dotting our i's and crossing our t's and making sure that everyone, we get the information we need, and the attorney general's office is confident that they are supplying the needs of their client, which is crucial. Is there any questions on the bylaws? If not, then I would look for a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the bylaws.
Mayor Schneider?
James did the bylaws, I guess.
Okay.
Second?
Ms. Longennecker, seconds? I will call the roll. Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Miracle?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Von der Haar?
Yes.
Ms. Longennecker?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Thank you. Is there any other old business, new business that anyone wanted to bring forward at this time? No? Then I will go to the mayor. Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do. I'll make my comments brief.
Okay.
I would like to thank each of you for being involved in this process, and I really do feel that this is something that strengthens our community and makes the city of Norwood much better, and will be much better. One of the things that I've said, and have multiple times, I've said, we need to get rid of the peaks and valleys. The city seems to be doing pretty well, and then we drop into a valley, and then we hit a peak again. Through my lifetime, I feel like I've seen six or eight different peaks and valleys. And this process really helps try to level those things out, so I really appreciate it, the efforts that you guys have taken thus far. I do want to thank Jim Stith, the auditor, and his, his staff. They've done a great job. They're pulling together reports, they're putting together numbers, they're coming back to us with, with information, saying, well, we found a problem with this or that. And we're, it really, it is a process, these documents and all of the, all of the different spreadsheets. It's a process that takes time and effort, and then time and effort again. So thank you very much, auditor for the city of Norwood, Jim Stith, thank you. And then the state auditor's office, of course, Anna Mary and April, you guys have done a great job for us, and a real service to the city of Norwood and to the community members here, keeping on top of this, keeping us, you know, I'll say, keeping us in line, because yes, that's what we need at times. Questioning, putting, putting really thoughtful and insightful questions out there for us to really scratch our head and go, well, and finding the answers. And it makes us better and more capable of doing our jobs as, as elected officials for the city. You know, this, the city council has a really good finance committee right now, smart people that are, that are numbers crunchers, and they are asking very good questions, and I commend them for their time and efforts in working with us, and when I say us, I mean the auditor and I, on, on putting this thing together and really putting together the structure of this. So, you know, clearly, with this commission's work that, that has been done, I came on, I've been here for three months, this is, in my opinion, an exceptional plan. It's built off of the stuff, the work that you guys have completed over these last couple years, and can't thank you enough on that. And then Ms. Hanran, thank you for, for your efforts and time for this, too. So thank you very much.
Council President?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to report out, give an update on two projects that I'm working on. Anna Mary's already alluded to one, the reporting on accounting methods. At the council of the whole meeting on March the 9th, I shared with the city council the report on accounting methods. I highlighted the 34 items that we're going to be working on. After that, I've been communicating with Anna Mary and April. They have identified, created a nice Excel spreadsheet, by the way, identifying the comments and who's going to be responsible for this. And then moving forward, we're going to work out the procedural method of how we want to communicate that to the department heads, and how we're going to correct these items and, because ultimately, they need approval from April and Anna Mary, so. And I can email this out to everyone. I'll do that today, just to give you an update. I know Jim, Mr. Stith, has already worked on quite a few of those, so we need to just forward those to you for approval. Secondly, I've been working with Angela at Rita. We had a meeting scheduled for March the 19th. Unfortunately, for obvious reasons, we had to cancel, cancel the meeting. She has forwarded a presentation to me, which I would like to forward to you. Also, there is a worksheet that she would like our treasurer to complete and to return. So I will forward that to you, forward that presentation to you in electronic form, and then hopefully, I'm not sure when, we can have them come down to city council and make the presentation. So I wanted to keep my comments brief, there's two things I'm working on.
Great, great, sounds good. One of the items in the plan, actually, is investigating, reviewing, researching Rita. So, very good. We do have a member of the public, I know I didn't put it on the agenda, but, okay, all right. I will, from now on, since we did approve those amended bylaws, I will put that on the agenda. So hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll be sitting in different situations than, than this. And again, going down the agenda, the next item is the determination of the next meeting date and time. I'm going to be really honest with you. I've been, I have been listening, well, not daily, but quite often, to the press conferences that the governor has had. And I've, in particular, been really listening to our health director. The peak is lower, we're flattening it, but the curve, rather, we are flattening it. But now, what that has done is moved the peak to more like mid-May. Due to that, I'd really like to look at sometime in June as our next meeting. This will give folks to some time, to, the city folks, to do some time, to allocate some time to maybe some of those reviewing things. Anna Mary and April will still be in touch, looking over the fiscal conditions quite regularly, so we don't have to worry about that. But I would feel better if we kind of push it down the road to June, if that's all right. Is there a particular day of the week that is better? Because I don't, I don't really have any strong... What about, this is a Tuesday, what about June 9th at 10:00?
That doesn't work for me, but...
It does not?
Does not? Yeah.
Okay.
Out of that first week or 10 days of the month is...
Is not good for you?
Not generally.
Okay. June 16?
Yeah, sure, it's fine.
Yeah, that, that works.
Okay. All right. All right, well, then we will count on June 16 at 10:00 a.m. The only thing that I could possibly foresee where we might have call an emergency meeting is if the commission had to approve a loan or debt. Other than that, I think, you know, we're pretty much, we can pretty much let them work on this wonderful plan that we just approved and move forward. Okay. Okay, I then, if there's no other business, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Miracle seconds. I usually do a voice, but let's do, Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Miracle?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yep.
Mr. Von der Haar?
Yes.
Ms. Longennecker?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it. Be safe.